This conference will now be recorded.
It is 6:30 PM on October 22, 2020. We will call our city council meeting to order after establishing a quorum is present. So when I call your name, please indicate if you are on the call. Councilmember McCabe?
Here.
Thank you, Councilmember Crenshaw.
Here.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Priest.
Here.
Thank you, Councilmember McCowsky. Councilmember McCowsky, are you on the line? I'm not hearing anything at this time. Councilmember Easton?
Here.
Thank you. All right, we have a quorum of councilmembers present. So our first order, before we get started on public presentation, I'll ask anyone who is not speaking to go ahead and mute your phone so we don't get feedback. We're getting a little bit of feedback right now, but if you'll just go ahead and mute your phone, I will turn the meeting over to the city secretary for the public presentations for this evening. Thank you, Mayor. First speaker is Greg Reimer.
Ms. Montgomery, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Please start when you're ready.
Okay, thank you very much. Mayor, council, city staff, my name is Greg Reimer. I'm the president and founder of Community Waste Disposal. I want to here briefly just tell you a little bit about who CWD is, why I'm talking to you tonight, and a recommendation I have. CWD is a trash and recycling company. We're privately held. We service strictly the DFW Metroplex, and on Sunday will be the day one of our 37th year in business. So we have 300 employees and 150 trash collection vehicles, and we collect waste from 28 cities in the DFW Metroplex. Several are your neighbors, including Asil. We employ 300 people and have 150 trash collection trucks. We're the largest, longest-running, privately-held waste management company in North Texas. Now, why am I here? Because your trash service is out for proposal, and I suppose due to our fault, we did not notice that it had been placed out. We missed the pre-bid, and in fact, I didn't learn about it until 10:00 AM the day the bid was due at 1:00 PM. So we missed that deadline and therefore did not submit a proposal. That's why I'm here speaking to you this evening. Third and final, I want to give you a proposal, and I could do one rather quickly with just a couple of questions answered. And I would like to propose to you that you want me to give you a proposal because we are the oldest company. We service a lot of municipalities, and we're known to be very competitive. Some of our contracts we've had, municipal contracts, we've had for 30 years. So very well-established, very well-known. My recommendation is tonight, you request what's called a BAFO, Best and Final Offer. This simply means you're telling that the proposers that have submitted a bid, that you would like them to take another look at their numbers, and you'd like them to submit a new set of numbers to you. Under a BAFO, I would have an opportunity then to submit a proposal, and I would have no advantage or disadvantage to the other proposals because everybody would know what the proposals are and were. This is very commonplace. It's well within reason. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Joanne Wilson.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am. Please start when you're ready.
Okay, I am ready. I'm referring to the Parks Master Plan. Later tonight, I understand that the Parks Master Plan will be reviewed. How much did it cost for someone who doesn't live in Rome to tell us what our city needs? Was it $12,000 or $18,000? Were people in the affected areas contacted by door-to-door contact to see what citizens really want? The plan is very expensive, and maintenance costs are outlandish. Where do we get the money? Are there extra employees to maintain these parks? This money could have been used for upgrading our family park equipment, covers for the slides, mulch, which I believe has finally been placed into the park. The money could have also been spent for roads, water, sewer plants, fiber optics, to pay down debts. Rome does not need pocket parks. Old Town Rome neighborhoods are established and do not want pocket parks. Has any of y'all talked with the citizens? Has anyone even considered where people would park? The cost? Do you want a park next to you? And this really concerns me, and I believe will you. Earlier presentation by UTA, they mentioned a homeless park on Elm between First and Morris, which they're calling a pocket park. For the homeless, the print it presented her also mentioned that it could be for the homeless to rest if they come to request help from the churches. Observe, do we do away with pocket parks and use that for something we actually need now? In my recent and previous talks with citizens, everyone feels that Rome needs ball fields. Can that be our priority for the Prairie Point corner of Rome? And rethink the expenses and timeliness of the other parks. Also, if we had an area that we could have lead play on, it's my understanding that you can actually make money off these parks. So I think we need to rethink what we're doing. And also, tonight, you're talking about the planning and zoning. Again, Sam and company, I asked to be considered to be on the P&amp;Z. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Lisa Wilson, and her comments will be read by Joanne Wilson.
Hi, here I am again. One of Sam's ridiculous citizens of Rome. Councilman Sam Easton recently had an article in the Wise County Messenger referring to looking into his crystal ball. Hope that may help. He referred to all of us that objected to an ordinance relative to changing Old Town Rome to downtown district. And it's ridiculous. In not wanting this change, and because of this ridiculous action, Old Town Rome would suffer and things will pass Rome by. What was unique about his letter was the things he said this zoning change would do for Rome. Even though the council indicated they are transparent, all of these things Sam said would do for Rome has never been shared with the citizens. Because of the confusion on the ordinance he's referring to, the council, like us ridiculous people, took no action at their last meeting. Sam is correct. Growth's coming our way. Appears that a lot of this growth may be very near you and behind a lot of your allies in Ellis. Let's welcome this, and Old Town Rome is certainly headed for growth. Let us be mindful of this and be ready to welcome with open arms. As a longtime resident of Rome, along with my ancestors and friends, I take exception to being called ridiculous. And probably over 120 citizens or more that signed a petition would also object to your calling them ridiculous. They should be called, hmm, let's see, maybe voters. I hope that we do not have to continue to fight for OTR. We ask for your care and respect in doing away with negativity. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Shirley Mize, and she has asked me to read in her comment.
Good evening, elected mayor and council members. Regarding Agenda Item G, filling vacancies on Planning and Zoning Commission, this P&amp;Z planning commission has two alter members, and to be fair, these two members should be first at hand considered for the position before this council goes and asks for new members to apply. This action that is being taken today is nothing but a revengeful act towards the acting alter members because of biased thoughts of our current elected council members. I have likes and dislikes in my world, but we do not use our elected seat to show being biased for any reason, period. Do the right thing for the city of Rome. Agenda Item K, Necessary Action Regarding Amendment to Ruling V Pre-Development and Services Agreements with P&amp;B Capital. Several Chisholm residents spoke last week as concerned citizens in their presentation. Ruling V, P&amp;B Capital, to voice their concerns on the lack of green space on this new developments coming to their back doors, as well as not being notified of any new development coming to their location to voice their concerns. As well as the city and developer not sharing to these homeowners that their area would be a cut-through street to get to the schools and to FM 3433, which would be a huge concern to any homeowner in that area. In doing amendments to this pre-development, this would be the time for this council to stand up for the rights of its Rome citizens and to make sure that all restrictions for this development are met, and their wants and needs of those residents are heard and presented. In writing to this new developer, P&amp;B, please do the right thing for your city of Rome resident, citizen moving forward. Agenda Item L, Traffic Concerns Along Main Street in B.C. Rome. This stretch of roadway is used for a cut-through to Highway 114, and this road is very busy during the 4:30 to 6:00 PM timeframes, with people getting off of work and traveling home. I see speeding cars to be the first in line to get through the heavy traffic periods. I've seen a car and a truck racing down Main Street at a fast pace above the speed limit. I hear loud cars and trucks traveling at fast speeds every day. Do not see much speed or noise controls of these streets being done at this time, but welcome it. Agenda Item O, Interlocal Agreement with Wise County for Road Repairs. Back in August 27, 2019, Rome City Council meeting, I presented a concern of no engine brake, also known as Jake braking signs being put in our city limits areas, and also road maintenance issues on South Dogwood Alleyway. Requesting paving and dust control spraying with tar along South Dogwood and Russell Street. On September 12, 2019, at the Rome City... I'm sorry, I was not able to finish. Next up is Christine Smith, and she's requested that I read her comments as well. I am the owner of 265 West First Street, and I am unable to attend the meeting tonight to discuss the new park, which would abut my property. I will fight any proposal for any type of homeless park. I spoke with a city administrator by phone today, and she reassured me that that was not the intention of the park. I would also like to speak to the city planners to consider parking for this park. I want to know how you will ensure that the public doesn't park on our private property. Our family has possessed 265 West First and the adjacent lot for over 30 years. None of us are in favor of this park. Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes the speakers. Okay, thank you. All right, we will go on to our announcements from the mayor and the council members. We have November 2020 events. Remember, early voting continues through Friday, October 30, 2020. Times and locations are online on the city's website at cityofrome.com. Municipal Court Week proclamation, the week of November 2nd through the 6th, 2020, is Municipal Court Week. I'll read the proclamation in just a second. Also, Election Day is Tuesday, November 3, 2020, and Veterans Day is Wednesday, November 11, 2020. The city offices will be closed in observance of Veterans Day. Also, trunk-or-treat is Halloween, October 30. It's drive-through at the fire station with the fire department, the police department, from 6:00 to 8:30. So let me go ahead with the proclamation, and I believe we have our municipal court clerk, Kristi Adams, on the line. So in lieu of reading it to her in person, I'm going to read it online and then present her with a signed copy of that. So the proclamation of recognition from the city of Rome in recognition of Municipal Court Week. This is a proclamation recognizing the importance of municipal courts, municipal court clerks, the rule of law, and the fair and impartial administration of justice. Whereas municipal courts play a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas, whereas more people come in contact with municipal courts than all other Texas courts combined, and public impression of the Texas judicial system is largely dependent upon the public's experience in municipal court. Whereas state law authorizes a municipality to either appoint or elect a municipal judge for a term of office, the Rome Municipal Court is a state court, and its judges are members of the state judiciary. Whereas the procedures for the Rome Municipal Court operations are set forth in the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure and Other Laws of the State of Texas. Whereas the city of Rome is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us, and that judges and court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. Whereas Rome municipal judges are not policymakers for the city of Rome, but are bound by the law and the canons of judicial conduct, and are required to make decisions independent of the governing body of the city council, city officials, and employees. Whereas the city council recognizes that the constitution and laws of the state of Texas contain procedural safeguards and criminal cases for all defendants, including indigent defendants, and supports the Rome Municipal Court in complying with such legal requirements. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Rome, Texas, that the week of November 2nd through the 6th, 2020, is hereby recognized as Municipal Court Week in recognition of the fair and impartial justice offered to our citizens by the city of Rome Municipal Court, and further extends appreciation to our municipal court clerk, Kristi Adams, and to all municipal court clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. So Kristi, I will present you with this signed copy. Thank you for all that you do. We appreciate you. All right, are there any other announcements from council members at this time? All right, not hearing anything. We'll go on to regular session, old business, Agenda Item B. We have update discussion and any necessary action regarding latest developments for COVID-19 and mitigation efforts and actions within the city. All right, so the CDC issued new guidance on the definition of close contact on October 21st. So yesterday, we are evaluating our policies and procedures in light of this to ensure the well-being of staff, our public safety, and first responders, as well as the general public. We are also starting to receive information about when a vaccine may be available, and will be planning for this as appropriate. Obviously, supplies will be limited initially with critical areas and workers being addressed first. As supplies build up, it will be more readily available for the general public. We are working closely with emergency management and leaders within the region and Wise County, as we have been since COVID first began, when it started to spread in March of this year. This collaborative network has assisted our community, and we are appreciative of the opportunity to be a part of such an invaluable resource. So that's my only update in regards to COVID-19. We'll move on to Agenda Item C, Update Discussion and Any Necessary Action Regarding Municipal Complex Project. The only thing I have to report on this is that staff are continuing to work on the RFP as instructed at the Wise Council meeting. So that's all on that update. Agenda Item D, Update Discussion and Any Necessary Action Regarding the Master Thoroughfare Plan Project. We did have a meeting Tuesday. It was the last meeting of the Master Thoroughfare Plan Committee. We do have, I believe Kyle Weldon is on the line. I thought I saw him on there. This Agenda Item also kind of ties into Agenda Item L regarding traffic concerns on Main Street in B.C. Rome. Some of that discussion has already been talked about on the Master Thoroughfare Plan. Kyle, do you have something you want to update us on?
No, I was just going to let everyone know that we did have our third and last meeting on Tuesday, and we're in the process of taking in those comments. And at this point, we're planning to have the Master Thoroughfare Plan and CIP wrapped up and ready to present to council at the November 12th meeting.
Perfect. All right, on to Agenda Item E, Update Discussion and Any Necessary Action Regarding UTA's Report on the Parks Master Plan. So tonight, I believe we have Alan Klein with UTA on the line. They've been working with the Parks Master Plan Committee for many, many, many months now, in the midst of COVID and everything, and the virtual meetings and some of the things that have slowed us down a little bit. But we're glad you're here tonight. Alan and council has been given a copy of your PowerPoint presentation. I understand that you're going to update that for comments, and then submit the final plan once we get these comments this evening.
That's correct. I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this evening. And let's see if we're... There we go. I wanted to talk briefly when we started here about the plan and about, particularly about the implementation for the plan. And to do that, the first thing I wanted to talk about was kind of what the, two key elements about what the plan is and what it isn't. The first thing I wanted to talk about is that ultimately, it is just that. It's a plan. It's a guideline and sort of a roadmap forward to developing the parks, recreation, and open space system that Rome wants. And to that end, there is a considerable amount of leeway provided to the council and to Parks Board or Steering Committee as it goes along in terms of how, what, and when is implemented. We'll talk briefly in a minute about some prioritizations that we provided, but ultimately, it's a guideline for the council to act upon over this ten-year planning period as they see fit. And at each stage of that development, we certainly do recommend and trust that there would be public involvement and comment all the way along. Mr. Claus? Something that I think is important is that we started out looking at the city of Rome and wanting to hear from people in Rome, because you all know your community better than we ever will. To that end, public engagement was a critical part of this process in developing all these steps. There were multiple Steering Committee, Park Plan Steering Committee meetings, at which background analysis, proposals, all sorts of information were aired. There was an online public survey soliciting information about what citizens of Rome wanted from their parks, what they liked, what they didn't like, that had hundreds of responses. And there were three neighborhood-based focus groups that sought additional input on plan concepts and site plans for individual parks from citizens from all of Rome's neighborhoods. So I think that public engagement's been a critical part of this process and should continue so as parks are developed. Want to talk this evening, not so much about all of the background information, but wanted to focus on what is provided in the planned part of the plan. And we provide implementation strategies, who needs to be involved, prioritization of developing parks, facilities, funding strategies, cost estimates, and a monitoring and evaluation plan to make sure that the parks development process is on track. We provide an implementation matrix for each of the proposed new parks and for the two existing parks with some updates. And those just indicate who's involved, what steps need to be taken, and a general timeframe for each of those, short-term, medium-term, and long-term. In addition, we offer funding strategies, both internal for the city in terms of providing resources and different ways of doing that, and external grants from foundations, from state agencies, and from other agencies like NCT Cog, that will help leverage funds from the city of Rome, so that you're not paying for everything. And in addition, we talk about working with your development ordinances to provide dedication requirements in lieu of, so that developers who come into Rome are incentivized to help provide land and potentially facilities for Rome's park systems, which benefits them as well, because they'll be producing a better product that ought to be better. We also provide general proposal cost estimates. Again, general, you're not going to be able to know exactly what a park's going to cost until you get the architecture and the... We wanted to provide you with prioritization options, and one of the things that we'll start with is prioritization by equity. By equity, we mean geographic. Wanted to do as best we could, looking at properties that the city already owned, or had a reasonable opportunity of working with another governmental entity to develop, and wanted to make sure that all of the different neighborhoods of Rome had at least a neighborhood park to go to. And to that extent, we prioritized from the First Elm down to, the final one would be the large Biwell Community Park. So that's not the only possible prioritization. It also prioritized by park size, if you're looking at, if one of your key, if you decide that the key prioritization element is kind of cost, park size is a little bit of a stand-in for that. So clearly, the Rome Veterans Memorial is the smallest park, and again, going down to the Biwell Community Park at almost 40 acres would be the largest facility and the last interest. Also, prioritization by project cost estimates. Rome Veterans Memorial was, based on all of the input that we received from citizens, there was not a lot that was wanted there in addition. So the estimated project cost is very low. We start going to some other parks, like the proposed Park Four, go back up, which is the Morrison Old Mill Park. That's not a very extensive, again, facilities were not wanted in a whole lot of intensity there. And then finally, you get to the larger parks, get to Ellis Waterfall, you get to the Prairie Point, where we have proposed ball fields and things like that, and you get to the, again, the large one, the Biwell's Community Park. Those would all be your more expensive parks that would need to be, something that would be part of, all of this would need to be part of capital improvement plans, but there would need to be probably more planning and more time involved and arranged for funding. We also suggest that because each of these parks, developed facilities adds a little bit to your maintenance and operations expense, that perhaps some of the larger parks need to wait until later in the planning process, because Rome, seven years from now, is probably going to be a different city with more capacity, a lot more capacity than it has right now. So no need to get ahead of yourself on the costs and things like that. Also, can look at prioritization by the amenities that the citizens told us that they wanted. We did our best to try to understand... Uh, we did our best to try to understand and hear what folks were looking for, what was most important to them, and determine where within your park property that might best go. Um, again, Rome Family Park in this case would probably be the first priority because it's less expensive and you can get a little bit more in there. Um, excuse me, adding to an existing park, uh, and so on. Uh, Rome Veterans Memorial, there was a lot of demand for anything else there, so that, that comes last. For each of the proposed parks, we provide plan renderings. In this case, this is Rome Family Park. Indicate all of the different potential um, uh, facilities within the park. Again, that these were things that uh, were part of what we call the demand-based assessment, meaning that these were things that through the survey, through the focus group meetings that Rome citizens asked for in their park system. So, this was determined to be the place that uh, as and to best develop things like a splash pad. Um, and to develop uh, an adventure playground and some things like that within the park. And for each of the park facilities, we talked a little bit earlier about providing an implementation matrix, this is all of that that shows the different actions away from, most of them start with addressing any uh, unmet operation and maintenance needs of the park first. And then finally to down to a void construction, looking at who needs to be a part of that, why that's gonna be done, and uh, priority in terms of uh, timing of that. And each of the parks has a similar matrix with it so that you can kind of look and see where these things fall. So, um, the Biwell Estates Neighborhood Park that we're proposing, uh, in this case, again, it's, it's primarily to serve this neighborhood. There is uh, access to lawn areas, to a walking trail, uh, to pollinator gardens, picnic areas. Um, there is an ex- uh, opportunity to extend the trails into the Biwell Estates Community Park, the very, the thirty acre park uh, behind it. And we tried to group a lot of the more active uh, items and elements away from the homes that are nearby. Um, the only, in this case, the only parking that would be proposed would be something like one or two spaces on the street to accommodate people who might uh, find it difficult for whatever reason uh, to walk or bike to the park, folks with um, who are differently able. Uh, and there is an all abilities play area proposed for this park. So that would be the only thing in terms of parking. It's not really designed to serve the broader community. It's designed to serve, in this case, mostly the Biwell neighborhood. Now, there's nothing to preclude someone from coming from elsewhere, but we don't provide, uh, or not suggesting that there's gonna be a lot of parking. In this case, uh, Potential Park Four is Old Mill and uh, Morris. And again, this, as we went through focus groups, this kind of kept getting scaled down in terms of the level of activity, which is just fine. Um, here, it's, it's primarily a place that um, families with children can go um, and have a place to maybe run around, have a picnic. Um, there's a uh, a little bit of healing or a meditation garden there at nine to ten with uh, like a small uh, pondless fountain. Um, with running waters, very soothing, very healing, that sort of thing. So in this case, it's designed to be um, a restful kind of stopping point there within, within the area that's near downtown. It's kind of right across the the railroad tracks from Rome Family Park. And Elm Street Pocket Park, um, in the First Street Pocket Park because it's there along First Street. Uh, this is, is again, intended to be uh, something that is, is a, an amenity for the neighborhood. There are no terribly intense activities there. There's a, would be a playground, number five. There would be a little trail through it. There would be seating areas next to First Street and Morris Street. There would be kind of a space and seating appearance next to the playground. And there would be um, what we're calling a rain garden to handle some of, to help handle some of the drainage issues in that side. Uh, that being said, it, it to, to go and, and uh, um, it, it's again, it's designed for the folks who live in the neighborhood primarily. Um, there, there's not, um, to, to address something that was brought up very quickly. It's not intended, nor was it ever intended, as a, a primary refuge for homeless folks. That was a, a really um, uh, un- mistaken ad lib that we've apologized for because it's not the intention. Want to reassure everybody. That's not the intention. That's not what anything's designed for. It's time for folks to go there and, and be doing what they're supposed to be doing and enjoying some fun. And the uh, Rome Veterans Memorial, um, again, not a lot was, was uh, folks did, it's, it's a very nice park. It's, it's well done. It does very well at what it's intended to do. About the only thing that we really suggested based on input, again, was providing a second entry to the park. Um, and providing some lighting that could be used for maybe evening events, uh, and providing some upgraded uh, additional landscaping, basically put in some more flowers, maybe put in a few more perimeter trees for shade. Potential Park Five, that's the, the Biwell Community Park, the very large park. Um, there would be a lot of room for a lot of things, including uh, extensive uh, hiking and biking trails, picnic areas. Uh, there would be areas and uh, for court courts or um, open lawns, or uh, number eight, a, a little bit of pond and a fishing dock. Um, again, a, a lot of things that were uh, requested by the community and a lot of things because it's a large park, a lot of things can fit into this area. Uh, this along with Prairie Point, the challenge was that a good chunk of the park is within the floodplain so that we need to be aware of, of uh, we needed in thinking about how do we fit what's been requested uh, into this area without uh, impinging upon uh, the flow, the floodways and things like that. Uh, because you don't want to be building things that end up causing you maintenance problems and things like that. Notice it does connect with Potential Park Six, the Biwell Estates Neighborhood Park. And it would be designed to, to have a spur of, uh, hiking, biking trail go in. Uh, Potential Park Two, uh, this is the Ellis, um, Northwest I S D Community Park. This again, would need to be done, some form of interlocal agreement or something because a, a chunk of that property is, a large chunk of that property is, is owned by Northwest I S D. Um, that's something that the city would need to visit with them, um, that had at least some interest on their part in doing so, uh, and looking at this park as uh, potential amenity for the city and the school district as an outdoor uh, education lab and things like that. So there's again, um, hiking and biking trails. One change to point out, uh, number five, we had uh, initially designed a little bit of a spur upstream uh, trail spur upstream waterfall, uh, and, and going around and through around to the south. We're probably taking that off, uh, thinking that that's, that's gonna be uh, something that's a little bit too close to some of the neighborhood homeless. Don't want to be designing things that will uh, cause noise, distraction or problems. So the number five trail will be coming off, just to let you know. Um, unless there's an objection, you're uh, you know, on the part of the council. But this is uh, although it would take a long time to do, it, it's a terrific amenity with the waterfall. It's, there's a lot of room for a lot of different natural features, plus some other uh, playgrounds and outdoor features for the community and for the Ellis. And Potential Park Three is the Prairie Point Community Park. Uh, there is room outside of the floodplain, particularly in Area One, uh, in some of um, a little bit of the spur there on, on Area Five that uh, is a location out of the floodplain for ball fields. Uh, as part of what we're doing, we're gonna have a spur square foot measurement of that area for you so that um, you can kind of look at what you might be able to fit in there in terms of different kinds of ball fields. You can fit, you know, uh, little league fields or you can fit high school type fields or um, soccer practice fields, et cetera, et cetera. So there is some room there. Um, you can also uh, also have, again, hiking trails, you've got uh, picnic areas, you've got um, parking lots, a couple of places to access, one for the trails and one for the ball fields and seven and an area of other sport courts. Um, that's an area where you could put um, other sport court facilities like half court basketball field for all these. And for all of these things, we provide uh, cost estimates for a- average facilities, everything. Um, I'm just, just showing you one page of it here. Um, everything from, um, you know, very small expenses like um, putting in a very small playground, it's a thousand dollars all the way up to um, listed on here, where it is listed on here, swimming pools at, at eight million dollars, which is probably uh, and that's not part of the rec- plan, but we wanted to provide some information there. Similarly, for all sorts of different facilities, these give you twenty twenty average construction, average maintenance costs uh, in, in uh, in give you an idea of what you'd be taking on for each of these.
Oh.
And we also have uh, funding facilities, thirty-two different resources, or twenty-five and some other ways of leverage, and provide recommendations for updating and maintaining the plan. And there we go. That's, that's it. Um, again, if, if there are any questions or I'm happy to field.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. Uh, council, do you have any comments, questions, or Alan at this time? Mr. Easton? I think you're muted.
I am not muted.
There you go.
Uh, I just want to reiterate the question. There is no homeless park, correct?
Absolutely correct. There's nothing like that, no.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Absolutely, no, absolutely. There's nothing like.
Thank you. Um, that was uh, that was amazing, Mr. Klein. Um, I know that as Rome grows and we have business move in and we have uh, population significantly increase over the next ten ye- five to ten years, that um, I think all of our citizens are really gonna appreciate um, having a plan and being able to put in all these amenities.
Well, thank you. We, it, it's been a very good experience. I, I do want to thank Cynthia, who's, who's been, worked really hard uh, on this uh, in, in helping us uh, work this through and, and everybody who we've worked with at Rome. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Alan. And a- and as you said earlier, um, there was a lot of citizen input uh, from the committee to the focus groups, to the surveys, um, that uh, this is really based upon all of that input. Um, and it's a, a guideline for us um, in making choices in regards to our parks and it provides cost estimates so we can evaluate what our priorities are. So, thank you for putting this concisely in one document where um, we can look at it um, and make plans off of that. So I think that's a wonderful way to approach our parks plan. Any other comments or questions from our council members?
I do, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Even though you pretty much just stole it. Um, I just want to say, Mr. Klein, thank you for coming in. Uh, this is some amazing information that we're definitely gonna be able to use over the next uh, many years. And I appreciate you and your group, um, not coming in and trying to tell us what we need to do. Rather, uh, I know y'all took a lot of citizen input with the surveys and everything. Uh, I know I participated in the survey as well. And I'm, I'm happy that y'all worked with the, the citizens and the input that they did to come up with all of these ideas and these parks uh, based off of what the people here want. So i- it's good to see that um, our people, our citizens are actually listened to um, in designing all of this and that y'all didn't just come and take it over. So I really appreciate you and your group working with the our, our other committee members and the people around town that participated. So thank you.
Yes, um, thank you, uh, Councilmember McCabe. Uh, Mayor Protim Priest, I see a hand.
Okay. All right. I, I just want to thank the uh, the, the Parks and Rec Committee. Uh, they took on a major uh, effort here. It, they, they spent a lot of time working with it, uh, U T A. They spent a lot of time uh, with the, with the surveys, the focus groups. They came around a huge learning curve uh, and put in an enormous amount of time over these last months. And so, um, with the guidance of the U T A crew, uh, but, but our local folks that live here, that volunteer their time to be on the committee, they did an awesome job. I mean, it's fabulous. And for someone that spent a lot of ti- of her time in, in the past, uh, writing grants, looking at funding opportunities and those kinds of things, it takes this kind of plan in order to even apply the funding to help ourselves. And so, without the plans, there is no alternative funding. You can't just go ask for money and not have a plan. And my gosh, we've got, we've got some good things to work with. And I just want to thank the committee so much.
Lady was great.
I would just like to echo those thoughts. Um, you know, Tommy and her uh, group did um, yeoman's work um, in guiding this process. So, they put in a lot of time and a lot of effort. They sifted through a lot of information. So, um, you know, there's a lot of volunteers are what makes a community successful. So, um, I, I commend them for their time and their energy and their effort. And, and the U T A team as well. Um, I think they gave us a, a lot of time and a lot of quality product and it is a great product that will lead, lead the community into the future.
Yeah, if there are any more questions, while you got me.
Any questions? All right. Well, we appreciate you being on the call tonight, um, Alan, and please express our thanks to the team as well on your end. Um, and we look forward to the final document, um, so we can share and use for many years to come.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. And y'all take care. Have a really good evening and a really good weekend.
Thank you. You too. All right, um, we are done with agenda item E. We will move on to agenda item F. Update discussion and any necessary action regarding the water source and water rate study. Um, so we do have uh, Kyle Weldon on the line. I, I see Jeff James is on the line as well. Um, this is a, a study that council commissioned, um, and uh, charged staff with taking care of our water source and our water rate study. And so, Kyle and Jeff, and all the team at Himalaya Horn have been working on that. You want to kind of give us an update?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, one, I think the council is aware that we've been working on this now. Did everyone else hear that echo?
Y- yes. If everybody could mute your phones, um, so we can hear. We're getting a little feedback from some of the callers. Thank you.
Great. Uh, anyway, I'll touch on it very, very quickly. So the- So the, the good news for everyone is, is we've just finished the study. As a matter of fact, we had our last call on Monday and we've come to a recommendation. I'll quickly go over that. Our goal will be to have a completed report to you and deliver that to you the next council meeting on the 12th, as Kyle mentioned about the master's thoroughfare plan. So let me just kind of hit the quick updates on what we've found and then recommend what the next steps would be. So we looked at five potential future long-term water supplies for you. The first one was, would it make sense to build any or construct any new groundwater wells? Extend your, your wells like you have today? And pretty quickly, it was determined that was not a viable option just based on the unreliability of groundwater and some of the availability. The second option that we looked at would be to extend your current contract with Walnut Creek, Special Utility District, for another extended time into the future. That is a viable option. Walnut Creek would need to agree to that extension and a higher rate than 1 million gallons a day from what your current agreement consists of. And their current or the, the current price that you pay is $6.10 per thousand gallons. And there would need to be some additional improvements made to, to your system and potentially theirs that would be included in that evaluation. The third option that we evaluated was contracting directly with Tarrant Regional Water Supply District that owns and controls the, the water in, in both Eagle Mountain and Bridgeport and see if there would be a way that the city could construct their own water treatment facility, raw water pipeline, and basically have your own water system. And that's viable. The capital cost on that option is, is quite extensive, as you might suspect. And the cost per thousand gallons is $1.25 per thousand. And then the, I'll say last, but it's not, it wasn't really the, the last option that we looked at was see if a new wholesale water agreement could potentially be executed with the Upper Trinity Regional Water District. And that's a very viable option. Their current contract rate is $2.50 per thousand gallons and would also require some capital improvements, some pipelines and things like that. We did talk to the city of Fort Worth just to, just to touch on that. And at this time, Fort Worth didn't think they would be able to provide water within the timeframe that, that Rome is needing it. So with that very quick summary, our recommendation to you would be to pursue a new agreement with Upper Trinity Regional Water District. And those would be some of those steps that then you would want to really dive into a lot of the details. And so that's a, that's a quick summary of where we are and what our recommendation will be in the report that you'll see next month.
Okay, great. I think we need to pause for just a minute. We're having a little technical difficulty. So if we could recess for a few minutes, if everybody will just stay on the line, but mute your phones, let us work on this. We've lost a couple of people. Okay, can everybody hear me? I think we've, we've got some of our technical difficulties worked out. Thank you for your patience. Okay, so Jeff James just gave us an update on the water source rate study and some of their recommendations and what the option, options are at this point. So basically, what we're looking for from council is to receive an authorization for staff to enter into discussions and negotiations with the Upper Trinity Regional Water District in order to complete the water source study and bring that back to you on November 12. So we would entertain a motion, authorize staff to continue with these negotiations or enter in these negotiations and discussions. Councilmember McCabe, I see a hand. Are you making the motion? All right. Thank you. Do you have a second on that motion? Mayor Pro Tim Priest, I see your hand. All right, we'll go for a roll call vote. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Priest?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember McCowsky?
Aye.
I apologize. Your names are right next to each other on my boxes. Councilmember Eason?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Motion carries. All right, Jeff and Kyle, we have marching orders and you can continue on and we'll see you November 12. All right, on to Agenda Item G. Discussion and any necessary action regarding filling vacancies on the Planning and Zoning Commission. At the last meeting, this is really a carry forward from the last meeting. And the discussion at the last meeting was to continue carrying this forward till November 12th pending the November 3rd election results. So if there's no other opposition to that, we'll continue on with the discussion from the last council meeting. Okay, not, not seeing any, any hands or comments. We'll move that to November 12. Okay, our next item is a public hearing. So we will open our public hearing at 7:31 PM. And Agenda Item H, the Rome City Council to conduct a public hearing to consider a request for a carport at property being described as Legal Acres 2.209, Lot 2, Block 1, Subdivision Rolling Hills Edition, also known as 321 Red Bud, Rome, Texas, 76078. Do we have anyone that signed up for the public hearing? City Secretary?
No, ma'am. I didn't get any requests, but I did get two responses in the mail and they were both in your packet. One was from Mr. James Humphrey and he was in favor of the request. And the other one was from Juan and Carmen Rodriguez and they were also in favor of the request.
Okay, thank you. All right. Having those two requests read, we will open it up to the floor if anyone would like to speak for this public hearing item. Please announce yourself and where you're from. Okay, not, not hearing anything. We will close our public hearing at 7:32 PM. Go on to regular session, new business. Discussion and any necessary action regarding a request for a carport at legal property being Legal Acres 2.209, Lot 2, Block 1, Subdivision Rolling Hills Edition, also known as 321 Red Bud, Rome, Texas, 76078. So this matter was presented before the planning and zoning and was approved for bringing to the city council. It is my understanding, Cynthia, have you called in yet? It's my understanding that it's been reviewed by all the appropriate staff.
That's my understanding, Mayor.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you, Carmen, for, for that. Yes, Cynthia, we can hear you.
Yes, it has been reviewed. And, and as you, I think, mentioned, I, I don't know. I just tuned in after I was kicked off. P&amp;Z did make that recommendation with the caveat that you provide that variance for seven and a half feet on that. This is similar to another one that the council, P&amp;Z and the council approved back in March.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember McCowsky, I see a hand.
Yes, I just wanted to make a motion that we would approve this report.
All right. Thank you for the motion. Councilmember McCabe, looks like you've got the second. All right. We will go for our vote then if there's no other comments from the council. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Crenshaw?
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Priest?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember McCowsky?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Eason?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Motion carries. We are done with that item. Agenda Item J, Discussion and any necessary action regarding the awarding of solid waste collection contract and notice of cancellation of existing contract if applicable. So we did do the RFP on solid waste collection and received three responses in the timeframe. The committee that evaluated the RFPs did their evaluation and scoring. And that's been provided to the council. The three that were submitted were Waste Connections, Waste Connections, Rhino Removal and Frontier. So in the scoring, the, the scoring of the three Waste Connections was first, Frontier was second, and Rhino Removal was third. So we're, we're going to bring that to you today to kind of discuss how you would like to proceed with these proposals. Some of the things that were looked at were the pricing structure, the recycling, as well as the customer service type issues. And so that, that's some of the criteria that it was scored on. Cynthia, what else do we want to add?
Well, I think you've covered quite a bit. I mean, we were looking at, you know, some hazardous waste, hazardous waste disposal, what days the collections would be made on. Most of the proposals and each, each proposer included several options. So to be clear, once council determines who they want to award the contract to, there's still room for negotiation as well as going out to citizens. There's things like, do you want to spend a little bit more to pay for curbside recycling? Do you want to pay less and only have once a week collections? Most of the proposals include carts, 95 gallon carts. There is a charge for additional carts. So there's a lot of flexibility with, within the proposed, each of the proposals and the opportunity to really structure that depending on what citizens are interested in, in, in what's important to them.
So from the council, what, what questions, concerns would you have? Councilmember Eason?
I was, I only got it today. Okay, so I haven't really had a bunch of an opportunity to go through this because as I look at this document, there's a, there's a significant amount of information here. Okay? I see that, I go back to page, page two of 19, it says Waste Connection ranked first with total weighted score of the 127. I also start looking at, as I scroll down, some cost, I mean, service options. I don't know. Like I said, I only got it today. So I haven't had a whole lot of time to, to go through this. I, I don't know what the citizens, how the citizens feel about curbside recycling beds. Right? I mean, could be a whole lot of people want that.
Sure. And, and that's, as the city administrator said, tonight, the objective is to make a selection on a company and then we would survey the citizens after and then see what they want. Do they want the once a week? Do they want the twice a week? Do they want curbside recycling? You know, what are the things that the citizens want? And based on the pricing options that are in those proposals, then that would determine what the cost ended up being to the end customer. So we're not asking you to make a price decision or a decision on recycling or once a week or twice a week. Not, that's not what we're asking. We are, our, our current agreement with Waste Connections, we're within the termination period if the council chooses to take that action and go with one of the other providers. So we're So we would not have an opportunity in November to come back to that if you wanted to exercise that termination provision. Councilmember McCabe?
Is that current provider?
Yes, that is correct.
And they have the highest weighted score?
Correct. Commissioner Eason?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, it is a tight schedule and I apologize for that. The, yeah, the term, this contract hasn't been rebid for 20 years. The term, the contract ends on the 20, on the 1st of January. So that's why this type, you know, there's legal notifications that had to be met and that's why it's a tight timeline.
Okay, so staff recommends that we remain with Waste Connections? Is that what I'm seeing from the weighted scores?
So from the weighted scores with the committee, that's how it came out. The individual members scored separately and then when combined to get that weighted average, Waste Connections received the highest weighted average out of the three. I'm going to, Councilmember McCabe had a hand up first and then I'll come back to you, Mayor Pro Tim Priest.
Thank you. So I just had a couple of questions. I'm looking at page 3 of 19. Looking at these numbers, what are we currently paying in comparison to page 3 numbers?
So I'm looking at my, I'm looking at my personal bill and the garbage on my personal bill is $15.59. There is a tax, a sales tax associated with that too, but that doesn't need to be factored in when you compare the rates there because those rates there do not have sales tax added on to them. So 15.59, it would be our current residential. This is not commercial rates.
Okay. And do any of these representatives here tonight that can maybe speak on these numbers or on their business?
I believe they all are. Okay, City Attorney, is it appropriate to have the representatives each speak if they're present?
It is fair, as long as all three are given an equal opportunity to present, answer the questions.
Okay. So council, why don't you tell me your questions and then we'll pose the exact same questions to each one of them.
So really what I'm looking at is that, there's a lot of different bids to one week. Maybe if they could just kind of make a little bit more sense of that age for everybody so it's easier for everybody to understand.
Okay, so they're pricing options that they've offered in their proposal?
Yes.
All right. Other questions we want to ask of our vendors that are here tonight? Mayor Pro Tim, did you have any questions, comments?
My question was a little step beyond that is that if we select the company tonight and then we look at options, how is it that we are going to canvas our citizens and see what they want? How is that process going to work?
Okay, so we would definitely, we could put out a survey on Facebook, we can put a questionnaire on the city Facebook page or on the city website that they could print off and drop off at City Hall. So there's several different ways we could solicit input. I believe the water bills have already gone out for this month, so we wouldn't be able to mail it out for this month. And I don't know if in the timeframe, we'd need to make a final determination on an option for pricing if we would have time, 30 days or not, to get that in place. But we would, we could ask that question to see if we could put that in the water bill as well to try to solicit what our residents want in sort of terms of trash service and recycling and number of things like that.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to kind of see what the plan was following a decision with the company. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions from council that we want to pose to our three vendors tonight? Okay. If no other questions, we'll start with, we'll start with Waste Connections. If we have a representative on the line from Waste Connections.
Hi, this is Brian. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, mayor and council. How can I help you?
Yes, sir. The question from one of our council members is if you could just explain your pricing options briefly. And so we want to allow the same time limit. I think City Secretary, if you'll keep time to three minutes. So we're fair to each vendor that's on the line. If you could explain, there's a few pages in your proposal, just kind of explain to our council what those options are and what choices lie before them.
Sure. First, we had one option with this once-a-week service with cart, with once-a-week recycling with cart. Then the second option was, forgive me, I don't have it right in front of me. Was, was once-a-week with cart with no recycle. And then there was a third option. I don't remember exactly what the third option was off the top of my head.
The first option for Waste Connections, I can tell you that if you want.
Yes, please.
Is cart, sir, is twice-a-week, maintaining twice-a-week on Tuesday, Friday, cart service with recycle, curbside recycling. The second option is once-a-week with cart service and curbside recycling. And the third option is cart service but two times a week, pretty much what we have now just with cart service. And it's quarterly bulk. It's no longer take-all, trash, take-all. So it's quarterly bulk and on all three of those options.
Yep, okay. So basically what we're offering there is quarterly bulk. So basically any large items like couches, chairs, whatnot, we come around quarterly and pick those up at the residence curbside.
Okay. All right. We're ready to go on to our second vendor, Frontier. Do we have anyone on the line from Frontier?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. This is Sean Iris with Frontier Waste. Appreciate the mayor and council giving us an opportunity to bid on the contract and also be a part of the discussion tonight.
Thank you.
We threw out five different options for the city. Option one was the current services, which was the two-time-a-week bag collection plus take-all bulk weekly. The second option was twice-a-week cart service with take-all bulk weekly. Our third option was one-time-a-week cart service with monthly bulk and brush. Option four was one-time-a-week cart service with 90, yeah, 65-gallon cart recycling plus monthly bulk. And option five was one-time-a-week cart trash service with every other week recycling in monthly bulk. And the reason for, you know, offering that every other week was just to have it be a stepping stone to the city trying to get into some type of recycling program at a, really a lower level of service to try to introduce it to the residents. Additionally, we proposed a quarterly bulk rate if the city chose to plug that in any of our options that were proposed. And there's also a monthly bulk rate if you were to, you know, slide that monthly bulk into where we did the take-all bulk and brush on the two-time-a-week bag and two-time-a-week cart. We did include a 10% discount on the seniors. Our household hazardous waste is a monthly at-the-curb collection program. So a resident calls in, they provide some details on what they have and we will come around monthly on a scheduled program to collect all HHW household hazards at the curb. And if you have any questions you want me to elaborate on, on any of those options, I'd be more than happy to do so.
Okay, thank you. I think it looks like everybody is okay for now. So we'll go on to Rhino Removal. We have somebody on the line from this organization.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I certainly appreciate the time and the consideration of you and the rest of council. We only proposed two different options. The reason for this is we actually went out into your, into your city and talked to 15 different residents on our own recognizance, asking them what they would like waste-wise and recycle-wise for their city. So what we came up with, based on your community's feedback, the first option, we just left everything as-is. We'll pick up trash twice a week on the same days that Waste Connection picks up trash. We'll also pick up recycling once a week on Thursdays. Everything will be carted. We proposed trash in 95-gallon carts. We proposed recycle in the same 90, I'm sorry, proposed recycle in 64-gallon carts. We did offer $2 off on a senior citizen discount. A lot of the, a lot of the people we spoke with asked if we had a cart assistance program, people that are physically unable to get their waste, their bulk to the, to the set-out area, to the curb. We offered that as an option at no additional charge. Both of our options include hazardous waste disposal, an Earth Day event, as we call it, where we come out and be part of your community. We can either drop off, roll off containers. We can bring our rear loads out and mingle with the community and get to know, get to know the people we service a little bit better. We prefer the rear loads. Our section, our second option is moving all service to once-a-week. We proposed Friday, we could do any day of the week you like. It'd be every resident, we'd get a 95-gallon cart, a 64-gallon recycle cart, 95-gallon trash cart, 64-gallon recycle cart. We'd propose picking up bulk, extra trash, limbs, brush. We collect it every single week on Friday. This better helps people keep up with getting rid of bulky goods. It'd be two bulk items plus two yards of extra trash. Like Mr. Colehan from Waste Connection said, it's furniture, mattresses, appliances, et cetera. Couple of other things just to wrap up here. I'd like to say, you know, one of the things that really sets us apart from our competition is the price we quote, is the price you pay. We don't have hidden fees or environmental administration of fuel fees. It is what it is. The price is the price. We offered a 6% franchise fee across the board to the city, both commercial and residential. And we'd like, you know, if given the business, we'd like the opportunity to invest an educational cash contribution on waste and recycling. We found that getting into schools is the most effective way to ensure a clean, single-stream recycling program. Teach the kids, it's come home and yell at the parents. So I really appreciate the time and we like your business.
All right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate the information. Okay, back to council. Comments, thoughts? Councilmember McCauskey?
Yeah, I like the, you know, cart assistant because there are a lot of us seniors in the city area that have, at times can't get the 95-pound trash can out to the street or get recycling out to the street, you know, or get the cans back to the house. So that sounded good to me. I haven't, I didn't hear anybody else offer that. And I think I have my own 95-pound trash can. I don't use it right now. I bag everything and I use my tractor to get it out to the street.
This is Sean Iris from Frontier Waste. In our proposal detail, in the operational plan, we do describe the backdoor collection for any handicapped resident that has a formal okay, if you will, from the city that they are in fact disabled. So that was, that was a part of our proposal as well.
Okay, thank you. For clarification.
Waste Connections has that and we already do that as well. And that's in our proposal.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying, gentlemen. Okay, any other discussion with council? Any questions? Mr. Crenshaw, go ahead.
Yes, I'm very interested in recycling, which I don't think we even know. I don't know anywhere around here to do it. The, is it going to be co-mingled recyclable materials or do they need to be separated?
Okay, we'll post the questions to all three gentlemen who are on the line. We'll start with Waste Connections, Brian?
Yes, it's a co-mingled, single-stream, one cart collection.
Okay, thank you. Sean with Frontier?
Yes, same collection. It's a 65-gallon recycle cart, co-mingled material, loose, loose material in the container and collected weekly.
Okay, thank you. And then Jake with Rhino Removal? Same question.
Yes, sir. It would be, it would be single-stream recycling, one cart, everything goes in, we collect, take it to a separation facility for processing and disposal.
All right, well, thank you very much. That answers my question because single-stream does make it a lot easier for people to recycle and the easier we can make it, the more people will recycle. Thank you.
Right, good question. Any?
Frontier's recycling, single-stream recycling includes the glass, just for clarification purposes.
As does Rhino's.
Rhino, okay. Waste Connections, same question to you. Does yours include glass as well?
Yeah, we accept all the items that are accepted at the recycling facilities that we drop them off.
Madam Mayor, may I add something really quick to the recycling?
In regards to the type of recycling?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
One of the things that we did propose that's pretty rare for companies is we'll accept, as COVID has onset, it looks like this is going to be our new normal. We've seen a huge upswing in the amount of cardboard that we're collecting and there's no cart currently on the market that holds a good, a lot of volume as far as cardboard. So if residents leave cardboard outside of the cart, we'll go ahead and collect it. It's not content only. So to clarify, the recycle cart's full, if they have extra cardboard from Amazon deliveries or whatever, you know, delivered at the house, we'll take the recycle content outside of the cart.
Okay. Does any of the other, Sean or Brian, do you have a comment in regards to that and recycling? Any clarification for what you offer on your service?
I think all the powers would offer that, but yes, we would do the same.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Sean from Frontier, if that's something that the city is interested in exploring, then it's something we could provide. It does add to loose, blowing material around, you know? It does blow around when it gets windy, but we would have no problem handling that.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to look back to council for what you think about this. You've kind of heard from each representative from their organization. Councilmember McCabe?
So after hearing all the answers from all these questions, it sounds like as far as services offered, they're all pretty, fairly even. So unless anybody else has anything, I would like to go with the. Um, so unless anybody else has anything, I would like to go with the, uh, selection and go with, uh, Waste Connections on that.
Okay, so are you making a motion on that?
Madam Mayor. Before we go.
Councilmember Crenshaw?
Yes. I, uh, I just wanted to say that I appreciate all of them coming here. And from what I can hear, um, the gentleman from Rhino is very well prepared, has very, he's brought forth most of the items we had discussed here and seems to be on top of his game. Worrying a huge price difference in the service, uh, I kind of lean towards them.
Okay. Um, so let me go back to Mr. McCab for, for clarification. Were you, um, making a motion or were you, um, just discussing your thoughts?
Well, I was making a motion, but if we need to take that back, I can. There's more questions.
Okay. Um, so we've heard from Councilmember Crenshaw. Councilmember Easton, I thought I heard you, um, wanting to chime in.
Yes, that, am I muted? No. Um, yeah, I've been thumbing through the, uh, the score sheets. Um, on some of these items, um, RFP scoring sheet, uh, there are some items here with, seem like a, um, like quality of service. I'm, I'm looking at a penciled in notation that, you know, somebody gets a one, which means it does not meet minimum requirements. Um, so where do, uh, uh, I want to know from staff perhaps, or maybe we need to just find out, find this out later. Where do we get a determination from quality of service for that score? Um, on the cost of service, I see, um, some ones also, so that, is that just a, um, they're just that much more expensive and that's how they got a one?
Uh, the scoring, so the scoring was one to three. One on that was the lowest, three was the highest. Now, the, the tabulations you see along the top of the raw scoring sheets are ranking. That's just ranking alone. You do have a bid tabulation sheet that summarizes all the pricing options.
So when you say one, two, and three, it's just, you've, you've got a value, it's one, two, and three, because your, your legend at the bottom, one says does not meet minimum requirements. And so when I look at somebody getting a score of one for their quality of service, um, I want to know where you got the value. I mean, how did you decide that their quality of service didn't meet the minimum requirements?
That would have been up to, uh, the, the, the people on the committee and the way they interpreted the scoring and the ranking and the proposals as they took them as a whole and looked through each one of the proposals.
Um, I'm not, I guess I'm just not understanding this.
Hang, hang on just a second. We're getting a lot of feedback from somebody. Can you mute your, your phones so we can?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just have whoever's calling in on cell phones, if they don't know how to mute it, just put their thumb over the microphone because we can hear everything going on in, in the background. Thank you.
Right, right. If everybody could, could mute your phones, please, that would be helpful in not getting the feedback. Um, okay. Councilmember Easton? Your, your question being, how did, how did individual committee members come up with their tabulation? I mean, that's, that's the individual committee member using the criteria listed on the score sheet and using the individual proposals.
Yes, because, I mean, because quality of service, um, that's just a qualitative value by its nature and you're trying to put a quantitative score on it. And so I'm wanting to know, how did they do it? I mean, did, did you go back and did you look at some, you know, Better Business Bureau reports or, I mean, because th- these are some significant differences.
We would have to go back to the committee and get responses on that and bring that back to you.
Because, yeah, it, it seems to be significant because, yeah, the, the, these numbers vary wildly. I don't know, I, I don't, now I understand on cost of service, you know, how you can get that, that's easy enough to quantify, but quality of service is a big deal and that's, yeah, it seems like there's a pretty big hit taken by a couple of these companies. And I want to know where this quality of service value comes from.
Okay, um, let, let me just, um, we've had some technical difficulties with, um, the, the meeting and so if the meeting, we're, we're limited to 60 minutes and I don't know if we're reaching our 60 minutes or not before it kicks us out. So if for any reason that the meeting stops, just go back to the link that you were sent and re-log back in. So I just want to let everybody know that if you're calling in, just call back, um, with the access code that you had, um, in case we get interrupted. All right, um, Councilmember McCauskey, go, go ahead with your question thought.
I'm just going to state that I did not receive the quotations, RFPs, or the score sheet. So you guys are talking about stuff that I can't even see, so.
Okay, I'm, I believe you were sent the information and, um, from the city secretary. So we'll double check and make sure that there wasn't a problem getting that.
I've been going through the packet that I received and there's nothing in the packet.
It was a separate email. You got it today.
I didn't get a separate email.
I sent it a little after 4:00 PM this evening.
4:08 PM, yes.
No, I have not received it.
I did not get any error messages back.
Okay.
You're welcome to come to the house and look at my email. I have not received it.
We believe you.
Okay, okay, the, in, the technical difficulties happen, we, we, we understand that for sure. Um, okay, so, um, what questions would you have, Councilmember McCauskey? That, given that you, you don't have information in front of you, what questions have we not answered that?
I'd like to see the cost between the three companies, you know? And I'm listening to what they're, they're, uh, offering us as far as services goes and everybody seems to be barely equal, you know? And we've got service from the one company already. We've had it for up to many years and, you know, they tend to do a pretty good job. It's just going to, and probably end up being a matter of cost to see who's the most efficient as far as doing the cost on this.
And, and so the, the cost is going to be dependent upon the service that the citizens want. So it, without knowing that, we, we can compare similar services to see what the price difference would be and then compare that to our current service. And that's what the committee did. It's my understanding that that's what the committee did in their, um, scoring. Mayor Proton Priest, I see a hand there.
I just want to give you an observation. Everybody knows that over in Chisholm, we're half Newark and we're half Rome. And, uh, so Rome gets picked up twice a week with no recycling. Newark gets picked up once a week with recycling. And so we walk every street almost every day. And what I have noticed, and because Terry goes around picking up everybody's trash, is that, uh, picking up the trash by itself is generally, um, not quite enough because, uh, they stuff their cans full over in Newark as much as they will go, but they have trouble getting the lids down then on their big cart, uh, with just, with trash pickup only once a week. And that, but they also have recycling. We are big recyclers and so I'm like Kenny. I would love the recycling. I think it's, I think it's important that we do that, uh, you know? And so I would be just an observation of seeing how once a week pickup for trash versus two weeks, uh, two times a week and the recycling. Uh, I'm in favor of picking up twice a week plus the recycling once a week. So I'm not sure, just, you know, I haven't looked at those numbers in comparison to that, but that's just an observation of trying to keep your community and your subdivision and where you live as clean as possible without a bunch of debris, uh, blowing around in the neighborhood, is to get everything in those, those, um, containers with the lids down. Just my observation.
Yes, and definitely, um, understand that. And, uh, we would definitely want to get the input from the citizens because, um, some, some households may generate more regular garbage, um, and may, twice a week may be something that they prefer. However, if we add the recycling, maybe that splits their, their garbage into recycling versus non. And maybe once a week in recycling is the, the same thing as twice a week, um, one cart, you, you know? So, um, we would definitely want to find that out. So, a- and I, I think pricing is a big concern for any of us as residents. What, what's it going to cost me out of pocket for the service? Um, a lot of bells and whistles, you know, maybe what I want, but what can I afford is the reality that we, we have. So we want to be cognizant of the out of pocket cost for our customers. So, um, with, with, I, I guess I need to understand where everyone's hangups are, because it, it feels like we're not really getting anywhere on a decision, um, on a, an organization. Each one presented options that, that have twice a week recycling, once a week, are, are different packages that we can put together. So we can get there. Is that the main criteria that council wants to weight?
Well, as I understand it, Michelle, it's there, what we're trying to decide at the moment is just which company to keep, to go with. And then later we can, it's find out what, you know, bells and whistles we want. And it sounds like we could get similar service from either. They all have good service, I'm sure. So it's just that right now our decision is who do we award the contract to? Correct?
Right. Exactly.
Part of, part of my problem is when we look at the scoring, I've got, uh, if you look on page, um, uh, four of 19, right? You've got, you say the quality's all going to be the same. I've got quality for Frontier as a one, Rhino as a one, and Waste Connections as a three. And that's 40% of the total. And it's saying the quality does not meet the minimum requirements. And that's why I'm asking, how did they give these guys a one and a one? Okay, because if you're going to assume they all have equivalent quality, okay? Then why'd they get a one and a one? You go to the next page, five of 19, uh, quality of service, Rhino's a one, Frontier's a two. Okay, cost of service, you've got one, one and one for Rhino and Frontier. Uh, I, I need to, before I can decide on any of these companies, I need to understand why these numbers are what they are, what the background is. So I'm not ready to pick any one of the companies. This report is.
Okay. Is anybody on here that was on the committee that made this, uh, recommendation?
Well, there, there were several people on the committee, so in fairness to all of them, you know, one person couldn't speak for all the committee. Okay, so, so tell me, okay, set aside the ranking. Okay, let's not get hung up on that. Whether you agree with it, you don't agree with it, you five have to make a decision on what you think is important. Is, is pricing the biggest factor for you? Is recycling the biggest factor for you? Is customer service the biggest factor for you? Of those three, what's the most important to you five council members? Councilmember McCab?
Yeah, so just looking at the numbers on this page, um, most people are going to go, want to go with two times a week and recycle. Um, I'm fairly certain of that. So just looking at the two numbers, there's only a 5 cent difference on it, uh, between Waste and Frontier, I believe. But Waste is the only one that I see with a 255 recycling rate. And secondly, we have to trust the staff that they did their jobs with the rankings and that they looked at all the information presented, just like if it was B U Z and Parks and Rec. We, we have to trust that they did their due diligence on everything. This is the same case. Um, I'm going to trust that whoever was on the committee did what they're supposed to do. Um, and based on that ranking and the prices I'm seeing, I think it's fairly clear that we go with Waste Connections.
Um, Josh, I would like to accept that. My biggest deal is, you talked about what's the most important criteria. To me, it is what, quality of service, because you can pay, you know, you can get the cheapest value, but if your quality of service is, we don't always get the trash picked up when we're expecting it. And then you end up with trash sitting on the street for a day or two or three at a time. This is a problem. Or they pick it up in the morning on Tuesdays, they pick it up, you know, one Tuesday and then they pick it up in the afternoon the following Tuesday and they're inconsistent. To me, quality is the most important. And that's why I was asking, how did they decide on quality? Because if we're just going to flat say quality is, I mean, we're going to accept the scores, then you're right, we go strictly with waste. But I want to know why it is they chose Frontier and Rhino as being, did not meet the minimum requirement. What was the criteria on quality? I mean, how'd they get there? Because to me, quality is.
I have to agree with Sam on that one, which doesn't happen very often, but I have to agree. I mean, we're not here to second guess the committee. That's what they're there for, or the staff, they were doing their job. But due diligence, and if due diligence was truly done, then we would have those answers to be, make an informed decision. But if we are to make an uninformed decision, uh, that doesn't sit well.
Okay, so, so what you're asking is, you know, as Mr. Easton said, that can be subjective to the, the criteria based on the proposal. If the, the committee member had some experience with one or more of the applicants or the proposers, um, that could have factored into something, um, you know? So really, i- i- it's up to, if you don't have enough information to use the committee scoring, and that's all it is, was a scoring by a committee, if you're not happy with that, that is okay. But we do need to make a decision tonight. So I need to know from you what we need to do tonight to help you make a decision.
Okay, um, it's 8:18. Can we get people on the line so they can answer the question, how they came up with the numbers? Can we call them?
Come on.
No, come on. I, I, I don't know. These are just random numbers, as far as I'm good, I can tell.
I, I, I think that if the council agrees, I think, just set that aside because that's going to, we're, we're getting stuck in a spot that we're not moving forward. So I need council to help me find a way to move forward, um, on this. What, what are your sticking points? We have three people here. If you have questions, we will ask the exact same question of each vendor to get the answers that you want to make a decision.
Since we can't get any more information and all we have is the report that I find to be inadequate, that we only got it 4:08 this afternoon, and that's all we have to work with, and we go with Waste Connections and be done with it. But I'm not happy with the report. I'm not happy with when we got the report. Um, I feel like we're making the uninformed decision. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, we go with Waste Connections.
Okay, um, we have a motion. Council, um, Mayor Proton Priest, you have a hand up?
I, I want to know if we can table this to the next week meeting.
If we table it, then, um, we, we probably need to consult with the city attorney, um, because we do not have an opportunity to, uh, terminate, um, our current agreement before the 60 day window is up. So, um, I think we need to consult with the attorney. If you want, if we want to table it and not take any action, we need to find out from the city attorney what our options are.
Mayor, you have the option to go into executive session to consult with the attorney on any item on the agenda. So if that's your desire, we could do that at this moment, or you could postpone it till later on in the evening and you could knock out some other items on the agenda, however you want to proceed.
Okay, um, uh, how, how about we, um, go to executive session and everyone in the regular session, we need to re-log back in to reset our clock for the regular session? Will that be appropriate, Carvin?
Yes, ma'am, that, that'll work.
Okay, so we will recess everyone. Council will go into executive session. If everyone else other than council will re-log back in, recall back in on the number, the access code that you had, uh, we'll restart that as well. Okay, any, any questions on that? Councilmember McCauskey?
Yeah, I'm just going back and forth with Shannon. I did not get the email for the executive session either.
Okay.
And somehow they're disappearing.
I'm going to send it to you from a different email.
Okay.
Okay. All right, uh, council, if you'll convene into executive session, we'll recess our regular meeting at 8:21 and reconvene after executive session.